I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note, roll call, Jason.
For the present, may be informed.
And honoring students is our next agenda item. So, let's see here. I'll just go in order of my pile here. Raymond Leslie and family. Come on up. Yep.
Yeah, have fun. All right, I got lots of nice stuff to say about him. So, bear with me, I'm just gonna read, okay? Raymond is October's red spot of the month. Raymond's involvement in multiple areas throughout this year shows his priority to support others and contribute to work that has an lasting impact. During the past year and a half, he data the girls from him and Ray is in player name. It has been the result of hard work and leading into discomfort. He has played an integral part of continuing the culture and values of this space and is relied upon for his innovative ideas. Raymond continued the initiative of English four begun by Sebastian last year, where students meet with local companies over a five-week period to get a closer look at the realities and all facets of their business. He worked diligently behind the scenes, corresponding with local business personnel to ensure that the experiences were all involved. He used the tools learned to be applied to change in order to improve processes and help initiatives. He has also supported in small and organizing a kitchen space in the food room and helping develop the vision of the community kitchen. He has used his talent to art and design to develop logos for multiple groups, including the chain stickers used by Algo Ma Auto-Hop. His contributions in the tech ed area are numerous, taking on projects to help the community as he is highly aware of the needs of others and involuntarily takes action to meet those needs. Raymond's natural humility allows him to contribute to the foundation of multiple programs and initiatives. He chooses to take on tasks that are not often seen or given praise because getting recognition for his work is not what he desires. He simply wants to improve the quality of life for others. On top of all of his work, Raymond is a genuine compassionate individual. He is resilient and uses his lived experience to support others. Our school and community is better because of Raymond's contributions.
I would say so. Congratulations.
Hey.
And you can take a walk after a while, you can see all lots of stuff Raymond works on right over there.
I don't like this, this is really awful. Okay, ready, one, two, three.
All right. Okay. And do you know?
Cody McGowan.
Cody McGowan? Is Cody McGowan here? No?
Has a surgery, had surgery, so she's not here. Filling in.
All right. Alexis Hedington is here. Okay.
Come on up, I'm sorry, I'm big scared guy. I got lots of nice stuff to read about you too, okay? So, below is an nomination of district student of the month. Lexi Hedington. Lexi is always willing to help in the classroom with cleaning up, helping a student with his or her task and making sure all jobs are done. She is a positive role model that puts forth her best effort and is kind to everyone she interacts with. That's so cool.
All right.
Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Okay, and did we say that Cody's not here? Okay. Do we? Congratulations again. Okay, we'll move on. We don't have a special presentation, although we were honored with a special presentation right before our meeting by Penny Lemberger and some of her students. We were able to tour the aquaponics and hydroponic facility that they are doing. Super impressive and yeah, very exciting. We are always doing such exciting things. I guess a open house for the community will be some point in the future. So, I would encourage anybody that's interested at all in that to come see what we are doing. Pretty marvelous. Okay, board correspondent report.
Well, there's not too much going on in Madison, but however, I'll talk about a report that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards got from the Secret Service regarding school shootings. It was a report, it detailed the violent attacks in schools over the last decade, and it finds that most attacks were committed by students who either telegraphed their intention beforehand, suggesting that the attacks could have been prevented if we'd have known about it beforehand. The analysis suggested that there is no single profile of any student or attacker or any type of school that's likely this is gonna happen. They did find that attackers typically have multiple motives, mostly commonly involving a grievance with a classmate or more, a lot of them were used firearms, firearms that they mostly got at home. Most attackers had experienced psychological behavior or developmental symptoms. Half the attackers had interest in violent topics. All the attackers experienced social stresses involving their relationships with peers or maybe a girlfriend, boyfriend. Nearly every attacker experienced negative home life factors. Most attackers were victims of bullying. Most attackers had a history of school disciplinary actions. All the attackers exhibited concerning behaviors and most had communicated their intent to do this in some way. In many cases, someone maybe observed those communications, but they didn't act on it because maybe they were afraid, they didn't believe the attacker, or they just, they thought maybe they had diffused the situation themselves. What the Secret Service is recommending is that schools, they emphasize the importance of schools establishing comprehensive targeted violence prevention programs that identifies students of concern, assesses their risk for engaging in violence or other harmful activities, and implementation of strategies to manage that risk. Then I got to thinking, okay, so now we have this community youth advocate position that we are looking for. And so then I pulled that on, I looked at the job description, and what the job description is, is basically what the Secret Service says we should be doing. So, you know, I like to think that, you know, I know there's some, a lot of these districts, a lot of these schools, but one thing that they found was that many of the schools that experienced these tragedies had implemented physical security, physical security measures such as cameras, school resource officers, or lockdown procedures, those type of things, and they still happen. So, what my take on this report, a little bit that we have here with the results, was we need to be taking a proactive approach to this rather than a reactive one, which I think the community youth advocate position, we are taking that proactive report, approach to it rather than reactive. So.
Relationships instead of cameras and meeting some of those risk factors.
Well, you know, connect youth and families to community resources, build relationship with at-risk with kids. That's all as preventive measures in this report from the Secret Service, so. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions or comments for Pat? Okay, we'll keep moving. Board Caesar report, Mick.
Well, I probably have less because a meeting was abbreviated one because of the weather last Wednesday, and Jeff was down in Florida on vacation, so we really tabled quite a few things, but he did tell us that they are starting to re-up again for the student loan forgiveness program, and teachers and people in the, in the public sector, employees have gone to this program, have saved almost eight million dollars in student loans, so, in having to pay it back. So, I encourage any student or any teacher that, you know, meets these qualifications to get involved in the program. You know, it's about a thousand dollars upfront, but you know, you gotta look at the big picture.
Student loans are a big deal.
Student loans are huge.
Yeah. Okay. Citizens delegation, student representative report, Colleen.
Basketball began last week for the girls and this week for the boys. The girls played their first game of the season away at Rosalke on Friday, and the guys had their first game versus Two Rivers on November 30th. One act has had a successful season, and they perform at State in UW Milwaukee on Saturday, November 23rd. Musical auditions were held tonight at the PAC. The musical this year is the high school version of The Heathers and will be performed on March 13th and 14th next year. The Heathers is about a girl named Veronica who joins a club with three girls all named Heather. Veronica later falls in love with a boy and gets kicked out of The Heathers. It was changed from a movie into Broadway play to be more appropriate for high school students. Students will do research on their characters, community members will be brought into talk about mental health, and Noel Dell, a senior at Algo Ma, will make sure all the roles are portrayed correctly.
A little switch in terms of the, should be interesting. All right. Any questions or comments? Thank you. I don't really have any announcements, so we'll move right into administration reports.
Wellness Center, the morning classes of TRX and Barbell Basics are doing really well. Twenty people in each class. December 1st will be their first indoor farmer's market of the season. And then, just a little story about, if you've been in the Wellness Center, you see there's a bell hanging on the wall, and just this week, or last week, a father rang the bell for an accomplishment, personal accomplishment that he had, and thought it was kinda cool that the whole place obviously gave him a round of applause and supported him and things like that. So, little tiny things that are happening in our Wellness Center, we're building social connection with people and certainly appreciate when they achieve milestones in their personal lives and health and fitness. The PAC tomorrow night, Comedy City, 7:00 PM. Tickets will be six dollars. Saturday, December 21st, Big Mouth and the Power Tool Horns at 7:00 PM, which will feature the high school band as well. Tickets for that event will be twelve dollars, and just a reminder that all tickets can be purchased online. Forty-five day report, I won't certainly go into all of it with you, but to start with a bunch of positives, obviously, the tour you took tonight of what Penny is doing outside to talk to the students that work in that space and how they are using that space to contribute back to sustainable practices in our community and certainly in our, in our very own lunchroom, I think is wonderful. And that's just one of the initiatives that we, you know, are certainly so proud of. On the other side of things, we've certainly talked about for the last year and certainly talked about last month at our budget meeting, the impact of kinda changing demographics in our special ed rate. And I went through and did the numbers for everything, and I just took, picked fifteen, sixteen, basically just my first year as superintendent, and compared it to today. And we have grade levels that now have twenty-seven percent special ed populations, which is triple what they were just four years ago. Triple. We have basically groupings of kids that are almost twenty-four percent average. So, it has a humongous impact on how we do things, and I've been working a lot with my staff certainly because the school report cards came out and obviously what happened, right? We go down ten points. How does that happen? Well, you look at some of our class sizes. So, one class in particular has forty-one kids, that's well over two percent per kid. So, when we have students that have special needs, right, and then we are mandated that we can not opt out of the test, more than one percent of our population, you see the inherent disconnect we have. And it basically doesn't even allow us to meet or exceed expectations because simply of our demographics, which is really, really difficult, and it's hard to see when we also know what's walking around in the hallways every day and the growth that's happening. So, certainly my staff has been working a lot on that. And then, one of the things that we are, you know, looking at deeply is just rethinking and redesigning kind of how we go about our day, just because certainly our school board goals represent doing what matters. And when we do what matters and we connect kids and we build relationships, we see far more growth. So, we are kind of going down the growth stage instead of simply taking the state released report card to tell our story. Certainly tells maybe one one-hundredth of the story here, but it's not the whole story. So, I'm in the process of trying to put a one-pager together that we might send out to, you know, the school district just to show them all of the things that are going on in our district. Certainly, we talk about it all the time, but I think not everybody tunes into a school board meeting to see some of our students who leave Algo Ma High School and enroll as a junior in college and are gonna be done with their undergrad in fifteen months. That doesn't happen everywhere. So, we have a very broad range of opportunities, but we also have pretty significant challenges that we don't want to just gloss over, that we really want to work on.
Maybe we could send out a special edition of the Wolf Review.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the state report card is meant to be a one-pager, and I wanted to try and combat that one-pager with our one-pager, because I think we can just tell a little bit different story, because it doesn't recognize anything that you saw tonight. It doesn't recognize anything that we do in tech ed, it doesn't recognize any partnership that we have, it doesn't recognize any of the progress we've made in our district. And we have to think about that, because I think in a lot of aspects, we are the envy of a lot of people for what we've been able to do because of our relationships, because of our partnerships. And our students are, I think, appreciative because of all the opportunities they have. And when they use those opportunities, man, the sky is the limit. Continuing kind of with some numbers, in the first sixty days of the school year this year, this building had just four disciplinary incidents. Four. So, I think that's pretty darn good. Some of the things that we wanna implement, certainly Pat did a nice job of talking about our community youth advocate. And part of the discussion around that position and really what we do in a school district is developing student care teams. So, we have students who have significant needs and might not be academic, it might be social, it might be behavioral, it might be what have you, and we are recognizing that when we have multiple partners at the table addressing what we see on a daily basis, our students can really grow. And a lot of it, to be honest, is really not our students' fault. They don't have a home to go home to, they don't have parents to go home to, they don't know what's coming next. So, these care teams and community youth advocate and certainly that position is in partnership with other entities that we work with. So, we are, you know, looking forward to kind of expanding that. Already talked about the community youth advocate. I think it's important to mention that we have a tremendous list of partners in the school district that help us out a lot, and we are always looking to expand with new partners. You saw what Penny's doing. Natural Beauty, if you're familiar with them, is a gigantic greenhouse in Denmark. They reached out to us, so they heard about that, and how do we work with you? How do we learn about what you're doing? How do we get your kids to come and see what we're doing? Natural Beauty would be about five million times the scale of what Penny does, right? And they are a humongous company.
Would it be on the same scale as what Ray has down in Milwaukee as an urban farm?
Yeah, very much so. I mean, my dad works for Natural Beauty all winter long, hauling flowers all over the country, so, you know, he's just one of probably fifty truck drivers that they have that work all winter, so. If you're, if you're on your way to Denmark, it's in Kiran, if you're familiar with Kiran. Their greenhouses go on forever and ever and ever and ever.
Could be a nice place to go for a visit.
He just backs up and gets sent there and he's off. He does comment, "It's nice to haul flowers around, people are generally happy when you drop flowers off anyplace." So, I think partnerships like that continue to surface and will certainly give opportunities for our kids. And then, just with Wolf Tech, they got a new machine today again, so they just really keep expanding and they do such a nice job with a lot of different things. So, again, we have a great story to tell and we'll talk, I just wanna remind everybody about that. Win Network, we're pretty fortunate to be a part of this. It's a national effort to basically address intergenerational health and well-being. We have been recognized as probably one of the premier communities in the country that does this really, really well. So, the Win Network is basically trying to set up demonstration hubs. So, we are in the planning stages right now of what does that look like, how does it operate? The best part about this network is you have like super high-flyer people involved with this. So, I'm here in Washington DC, US News and World Report was there. They already wrote a blog about us that we can send you guys. You have very, very high-level connections, and then all of these demonstration hubs will be fully funded and fully resourced. So, that's the part that is intriguing for us.
Yeah.
But also, when we can network with people across the country, it really helps us grow, and it really helps us understand, maybe we need to look at something a little differently or try this. And, you know, we have partners across the country that really kind of help guide our work a lot of times. So, I can, I know Tia has some stuff that she printed off. But.
They ask for pictures on the screen board?
No, they don't. Well, I mean, I think that we have always talked about that, and we've always talked about the word unity and just consistency, right? So, we wouldn't be able to do what we do unless we didn't have consistent leadership and unified leadership on the board level instead of kinda chasing sales all the time. I think we understand and appreciate where we're headed. Do we always agree on everything? No, but that's the point of a healthy dialogue about improving things. So, I think the Win Network will be a really great addition to the work we're already doing, so I'm excited about that. And we got to bring two of our kids to that, which is always fun. I'm going to read Katie's report. Katie had surgery, so she's in recovery mode, so bear with me. She said she wants to share since I'm out healing from surgery, which has been way tougher than I had hoped. So, Veterans Day program follow-up, it was another successful event thanks to Ms. Massey and Ms. Neview. The winter weather didn't stop many from attending, and we were still able to serve just over fifty guests during the lunch. Added into the program this year was the sixth grade choir who sang the National Anthem and our first and second grade students who line the hallway to send off the guests with a thank you. During the program, Tracy was the guest speaker. She spoke directly to the students about her experiences in the service and also allowed time for them to ask her questions. Elementary school winter concert, save the date for this year's holiday concert to be held on Friday, December 20th, beginning at 1:00 PM in the PAC. Students in grade 4K through 4th grade will be singing onstage. Fifth and sixth grade band and choir students will also be performing. Fall Google for Education Summit, as a follow-up to the Google presenter we brought here during in-service, three elementary teachers had the opportunity to attend the Fall Google for Education Summit this month. Some of their biggest takeaways include: How to implement technology more effectively into the reader's workshop at the primary level; How to modernize and maximize your classroom as a learning space for students; How to use Google Earth across multiple disciplines, for instance, in math class, you can measure perimeter and area. The presenter said that she even had students measure the length for a walking field trip; How to create our own virtual reality tours for students using a three hundred and sixty degree camera. You can take pictures of places, add text, interactive pieces, and create a whole tour for the kids. I am going to a place that I teach about in December and really want to create a virtual reality tour of this place for my sixth graders' westward expansion unit next year. I also think it would be awesome if students became the teachers and created their own virtual reality tours around town, around school, or even as a history project.
That would be great.
How to use Google Keep, a note-taking organizational tool, as a resource for students who are often forgetful. We don't have any of them. You can add locations and times to Google Keep, so the presenter used it for students who would forget to get things signed. They would add a reminder to the student's phone and it would go off when they arrived at home. They had a lot of success getting things returned when they started using Google Keep this way. Also, Coaching Academy this quarter.
What is that?
Association of Wisconsin School Administrators.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I have to think about Wasda, Wada, Wasbo. Participated in one of the coaching academies. The academy consisted of four days of onsite learning and collaboration spread out over the course of three months. With a court of school leaders from different districts across Wisconsin, we learned more about and developed our skills in the following areas through a lens of equity.
So, Katie went to that?
Correct. Applying questioning techniques and coaching strategies that led to educator reflection on practice and impact; Delivering explicit and meaningful feedback using a balanced analysis approach, claim, evidence, impact; Engaging in crucial conversations needed to drive change. As part of the learning process, we videotaped ourselves holding a coaching session conversation that we then took back to the group for peer review and feedback. I can honestly say there have been countless times already where I found myself using the knowledge strategies that I've gained from this experience. Good? Oh. Jason.
All right. Business managers, finance bulletin report.
Mine's pretty short. I'm gonna run on non-candidacy, the June 27th, 2019. So, you're not gonna run, which applies to Dave and Nick. Those are the two that are up. So, that would need to be in my office by 5:00 PM on December 27th. If you're gonna run, I will leave that paperwork by January 7th, 2020, at 5:00 PM.
Who's up for reelection this year?
It's Dave.
Nick and Dave.
What were the dates again, Jason?
December 27th, by 5:00 PM, and January 7th, by 5:00 PM.
So, what do you need by December 27th?
If you're not.
That's the non-candidacy, Dave?
Mm-hmm.
And if you're going to run, then the paperwork by January, and that's the one you should be thinking about.
January what? I have an hard time hearing, Jason.
January 7th.
Okay.
Okay.
My next thing is, if I could, everyone should have a form like this by their desk. So, this is for the convention for 2020.
So this is for the convention for twenty twenty. Um, so if you guys could fill this out tonight and just give it a tour on my desk for your, for after being here or whatever. Um, but if we get that in earlier, the better. Um, not only for saving money, but, um, trying to get everyone what they want and that kind of stuff. Um, obviously the hotel is already taken care of a while back. Going along with that, I don't know if you guys want to decide as an individual or as a group. Um, M three is again hosting a kickoff to the ninety-ninth State Education Convention, um, at Good City Commons. Um, so that would be from five to seven PM.
Which night?
What day is that, Jason?
Uh, it is, uh, the twenty-first, so I believe that is.
Is it a Wednesday?
Yes, the very first. So the convention is from the twenty eighth, second to the twenty-fourth, so it'll be the very first night you guys get there.
So Tuesday?
No.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, so if you do want to go to this, I need to know sometime this week.
Okay, because they want to pre-register.
Yep, how we done it in your past is, um, I actually, um, paid a fee and I just take it off your receipt. So, okay, so just let me know.
And how much is that? How much is it go to?
Uh, fifteen.
Oh.
May I run president?
Yes.
On that, uh, convention, I read in the magazine, school board magazine, that you're going to be able, if you can't attend it, you're going to be able to attend it virtually. Uh, I would like to know how they're going to do that and what I'd have to do to do that.
Excellent. We will certainly look into that for you, Dave.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jason?
Yeah, so, uh, for Dave, what they're going to do is they're going to, uh, record the sessions. Um, and the ones that are recorded, they will make available to the people that sign up for virtual.
Okay, so.
It's after the fact.
Okay, it sounds like you need to sign up for virtual and they will record them and then you will get them, um, after the fact, but you have to sign up for the virtual, so we can certainly do that for you.
That would be the in, uh, individual sessions, right?
Correct.
Yes. They don't guarantee which ones are going to be recorded. They just say the ones that are recorded will be available online to the people that sign up for virtual attendee.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah, that was short and sweet, Jason. We, you got talked out with the budget last, last meeting. Okay, we'll keep moving. Special Ed report and Pathfinder update, Katie Horn.
Um, Andrea Phillips is starting a crochet club, joined this time, um, for the fifth and sixth graders. And she plans on making shawls with the kids to donate to the local emergency homes. Um, so I think she's looking for donations of people that are actually going and pushing those, um, around. Also, she started a book club that I mentioned at the last meeting and she had got a lot more participation than she thought. Um, the book is called Lost at School. I've written a book for it. It's a really great book, but it really focuses on, um, challenging teachers to think about behavior differently and having a more proactive approach versus reactive and kind of looking at the root cause of behaviors. Um, so the teachers that have been involved have really enjoyed it so far.
What was the name of that book?
Lost at School.
Lost at School, okay.
It's a really, really good book. Um, and up at the middle school and high school, they are, um, carrying up with Marie to try and start some yield of mindfulness. Up here during the what matters time, because Marie's seen so much success at the elementary school. Um, the, uh, Nan, Nanette Colm, and Jamie Allen, um, are getting that started, so that's pretty cool. And then at Pathfinder, we had one senior finish up this, so he'll be out early, which is really exciting.
She could ballot Pathfinders.
Hmm.
Could ring.
Because we have a wall that they get to put their hands in, a step wall, so. Um, and then health class with Ms. Malone and Nurse Carrie has been going really well. Um, it has been. It's been pretty good actually because they, some, our nurse was super stumped, stumped by a couple of their questions and so one time I phoned, phoned her in her office and she was like, like looking up stuff, like, what are you doing? She goes, they asked me a question I couldn't answer, so now I have to research.
Good.
And they have shown a lot of interest and want to do, learn how to handle CPR, so I think Ms. Malone's going to bring down her and handle CPR kids.
Great.
The, nothing to do with your activities, but the Pathfinder sign, when we see that it's out, are we supposed to give you a call?
Yeah, because we have, it's got to be some power issue and then like when it, it like trips the breaker and then we call to reset it and I don't think they go all the way back. But there's got to be something wrong because we have no issues with the one up here, but that one seems every other week it'll just, for whatever reason.
Going across to the library today and I looked up and expected to see all of the.
Yeah, and it's all.
What's going on? Nothing.
Okay.
Give you a call.
Yeah, that's, if I'm not here, call Jason.
So.
Katie, I don't hold to your spouse.
So what is the answer to that?
It's electrical on, it's not the sign. It's electrical from, from the building to the sign. For, my guess is there's a little nick in it or something and it shuts up. So then we just flip it back and then it resets itself and it's great again for a couple of weeks, but, so we'll have to figure something out.
We don't know if it's moisture related, if the moisture has caused it to short or what, but yeah, the fix is just basically turn breaker off, turn on, you fix again, but it does not stay.
This summer we had, um, when we had those two major storms and both of those times, yeah, so we thought it was that, but now it's doing it again, so.
Doesn't take much to, to trip a ground fault.
Yeah.
Okay.
A little bit to get.
All right. We are moving on to Tia.
Um, I printed out some stuff, so I think it's good just to show you if you want to take a look. I'm showcasing a couple of things that have been happening in our community in terms of the Loma One Initiative. Um, they received some community gift back dollars from the Loma Food Pantry, but it really shows a great partnership between a couple of entities. And twenty-one people in our community go through the four series workshop. And of the twenty-one people, seventeen completed all of the workshops in nutrition. Um, nutrition education, where they receive a lot of, and they also received all the goods to make some reasons as well, so that was just really cool. Um, we also work with some of the individuals that they, um, had a food pantry, so it was really great to frame that sense of community full circle here as well. Um, then spinning off of this precision machine, their, their employees have volunteer hours every month that they can during their workday, go up to the community and, and, um, you know, provide their support. And they knew what was going on in the food pantry and so they also did the same thing with our Wolf Den families. Um, so every Wolf Den family has a crock pot. They had freezer meals and, um, the Weekend Backpack Program also provides like if they're making taco soup, then they have all the canned ingredients to make taco soup, so it was really, really cool. And one thing is inspiring another and, um, just that coordinated here. I, I wanted to showcase Huff and Puff, so this is, I think, the second or third annual. Uh, but it's just growing and growing with a number of people that are just doing like all this partnership. I know they've had tons of years ago, but it's a Zumba activity on Thanksgiving Day. But kindness matters. They will be there. They have a little, um, activity that they're doing and I think last year they had over fifty people. They're expecting about a hundred that show up this year and all proceeds go to the Weekend Backpack Program. So again, just some really good coordinating efforts from eighteen people in the community.
Okay, I have no idea what it is.
Zumba is like a dance workout, yeah.
So people come?
So they come. So Shannon from Shannon's Yogen Fitness and Devon Schmidt, who's a nurse from Pervaya, but also does Zumba. They are going to instruct people, so you show up, you bring ten dollar suggested donation for Wolf Den and you exercise, um, right before you stuff yourself.
Got it.
It's Colombian, um, similar to salsa, but it has some very interesting moves.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really.
So from nine to ten in the morning?
Yep, in the high school gym, we'll have lots of people, so come on by, yep.
All right.
Um, Elizabeth's story, I think you guys have all seen Elizabeth's story. It was finally publicly shared through social media. Within one day, there were six thousand views and I don't know, um, two hundred shares. So it really got out, um, and I'm just, you know, I'm just really happy and proud that she was able to go on and go enough and create this enough to share her stories. I think that will really help others. Um, she was doing the same. I wanted to also talk about, Katie and I were, were talking about Wolf Den. Um, and I'm bringing this up because we had a little idea. We have a parent at Wolf Den who is going to be getting her GED. She's just a couple tests away and I would love, wink, wink, maybe if we could have like a mock graduation, like thing with a school board member or two in our Wolf Den denners, maybe you guys, she could, we could celebrate and have one in there that we would do at graduation day. Um, I think for our Wolf Den kids to see that is really powerful. Um, she shared her journey with them and the difficulties and we've been celebrating the milestones each way, so. I think that, I don't know, planting a seed, maybe one of you would like to do that, but I think it would be awesome to have you down at Wolf Den when we have a graduation ceremony. So, just a thought. Uh, Craig's Piggly Wiggly. I wanted to publicly say thank you. They've done so much for our school district and the community that thanks is just not enough. Um, we do have some plans to invite them to school, make them a dinner of all the things they would provide for us, the peanut butter and jelly and I mean, I could go on to the stuff that they did, but, um, really, truly they're a great example of how they can, you know, be stewards of their community and, and do what they can and so it's very sad that they're closing doors, but we, you know, wish Craig the happiest retirement. So I just wanted to say thank you. In your packet, we have a whole bunch of driver diagrams. These are created by our staff and students. Um, so it's a whole big staple packet there for you to cruise for your free time. I'm really proud of this. Um, this has been, I think, a good year in the making. I know Barb, at one time our school retreat had said it would be really great for our educators to see themselves in our driver diagrams. They are on the wall. We talk about them. But do they see themselves here? And so they've been creating their own driver diagrams, goals that they have for the initiatives that they're doing and I'm blown away by the thought process. Um, each had their own unique spin. These are just drafts, so nothing to, you know, get too serious about, but I just love the thoughts on here. Um, really, really awesome. And I, to go along with the next point about state report cards. Um, I would love to see us pull together a Loma report card and measure what matters to us. We have been talking about that, but it's clear that our staff and students have been saying what matters to them and the growth that they see and the improvements that they want to do, so. I think that we should definitely take advantage of some of the public networks we have and share that more broadly even than a Wolf review, review, just to say this is what matters to our district and this is what we're doing, so. Kudos to our staff and I'll share them more with you as we work on them. Um, the Community with Advocate, we have interviews tomorrow. Um, two things I'm excited about that is, uh, how we're going to measure success is something called Connect the Dots. So the students that we are working with, um, we want them to ensure that they have five people that support them. It's called Connect the Dot, so. I could say that, you know, Barb is one of my dots, so someone that, um, outside of my family that I know that I could go to her, she, we have a relationship. She supports me. She looks out for me. Um, we want to make sure that these students have five people in the community that they can go to. Um, and to us that if they're connected, um, and they have people that are checking in and those people know that they're their dots, right? So Barb can be important for me, but she might not know that she's important to me. And so the Community with Advocate is going to work really hard on making sure that, that we develop those relationships with these students and their families. Um, and then last but not least, in your packet, I put some slides of what Nick was talking about, the Win Network. I am totally geeked out over what they're, what they're, uh, putting out, uh, as what they're going to be talking about, but obviously vital conditions. If you look at this, our school district is all over this and this is what people all over the country are saying matters. And we don't just talk about lifelong learning. We know that lifelong learning, in order to have that, you need to have all these other vital conditions. I love how they're talking about thriving, struggling, suffering. If you look at one of the slides, it talks about those students that have high school or more, so those that graduate and go to college or employment beyond, you can see that those that are thriving are far beyond those that are struggling or suffering. And those that don't graduate high school, the suffering is just much greater. Um, it has a huge impact in our communities. So, um, just knowing that we are thinking this way as a district is super exciting to me. Um, the last slide that I think is the most important that I took away from that is the dynamics of welding and equity. It's a really kind of complex map, but in a nutshell, I wanted to point this out because I think I'm very proud that our district is thinking this way. So on the bottom, it says that, you know, we act in urgent services, right? We care in crisis. Basically, we do a lot of band-aid because we have to. Um, and it's not that that's ever going to go away. But if you look at the top and how we can be preventative, so as Pat was saying, we can be advocate, right? That's a preventative measure. That's thinking upstream. That's talking about the root cause of the problem, building relationships. Um, yes, we need security cameras. That's caring in crisis. Yes, you know, we might need a resource officer or a officer present, although I personally don't feel so, but those are the things that people do in care for crisis. I think what we're trying to do is really unlock the potential of people who are working in our school, but also community and how we can think upstream. Um, I'm just very excited to be here and having this, I'll be proud because El Goma's all over this, so. That's it.
Yeah, we definitely have to, um, develop our own report card, the El Goma Wave Report Card.
I think that would make national news. Oh, yeah, sorry, one more thing. Please get my notes. Epic. Our health records, um, access to students' health records will be live on Friday. We are starting with a very small pool of kids. Their parents and guardians know of this. Um, so all of the HIPAA forms have been signed. Um, we're starting with students that have seizures or are highly allergic, so have EpiPens or maybe a lot of, um, care and medicine. Um, so we're going to start with a small population of students just to see, but basically our school nurse will be able to access certain information that the parents know about. And also the biggest thing that we're excited about is they'll be able to create notes to the primary care physicians or the nurse practitioners and back and forth. That has been a really big obstacle for school systems. Um, and we are the first school in the United States to be doing this with Epic, so I'm very excited about that, so we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, that sounds.
We've talked about that for a long time.
Yeah.
It's been in the works for.
It's been in my dream.
Yes, it's been in the works for a while.
Excellent. Um, committee report. We didn't have any, did we?
Nope.
Okay. We do need to have a building and grounds, though, so that is something that we're going to have to set up.
Yep.
Um, okay, we'll move on to other specific items for discussion. This is an agenda item that I had, um, put on there and basically, I think we had sort of talked about, um, this is the time of year that by policy, um, we do need to do some kind of a, um, evaluation. Um, I did print out the, um, our current, our new policies about it. Um, and it's short enough that I didn't want to make copies for everybody, but I'll just sort of briefly um, review what our, our new policy book says about it. Um, evaluation of the district administrator. The Board of Education believes it's essential that it evaluate the district administrator's performance periodically in order to assist both the board and district administrator in the proper discharge of their responsibilities and to enable the board to provide the district with the best possible leadership. The board shall annually, no later than January first, evaluate the performance of the district administrator. Such evaluation shall include an assessment of the progress toward the educational goals of the district, the working relationship between the board and the district administrator, the board's own effectiveness in providing direction to the district administrator. Such assessments will be based on defined quality expectations developed by the board for each criteria being assessed. The board and the district administrator. The board and the district administrator jointly shall, at the outset of each evaluation, determine the method by which the evaluation shall be conducted. And then they, in this policy, it says such method may include, A, the district administrator's own self-analysis of the current status of the district, B, the active participation of each board member, C, a recommendation from a board committee, D, a compilation of assessments on a prepared standard form by individual board members, which shall then be reviewed jointly by the board and district administrator, which is what we have been doing for the last few years. E, evaluation interviews between the board and district administrator during which no other business is discussed, and F, the district administrator's assessment of board efficiency and effectiveness. So obviously, the, we need to do it. We need to do it before January. We had talked about the fact that maybe doing the assessment to such an extent that we've done in the past isn't necessary this year. I thought what I would propose is the different evaluations categories that we went through in detail on that form. I was thinking maybe we could designate part of our close section next month and do it in the, as an evaluation interview between the board. Use that as a guideline. And then we could hit on the, the three points that are required in them. Just wanted your opinion on that, if anybody felt that we needed to do the, the longer form or if we could do it in more of a, I thought, you know, we can certainly. Okay, all right. It doesn't require, I mean, this, our policy requires, allows us to determine how we do it. It just has the, you know, the required dates and if we do it next month, we will comply with our policy, so, okay. All right. We'll move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, and the budget hearing minutes of October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen.
I saw one.
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Ann. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills presented to us. Seconded by Dave. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, subsections one, C, E, F, and I, for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing resignations. Motion made by John. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.